Okay, that's me to be quiet, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't pay this R M N S down and I'm fixing, I'm fixing those four children.
Who's this water line? Who is this water line here? Is it down in, uh, Rock Creek?
There's no water.
Is there?
I don't know.
Um, let me know when.
I remember.
Okay. Well, I don't need it. I mean, I swear to God, what the hell is going on with this? Why ain't it going there?
Yeah, maybe it's going down that lane over there. All the houses, well.
Yeah, what the, I mean.
Bobby. Johnny Pyle. Him and Camille, only two down on that end.
Explain this to me. What's, what's the deal? I mean, is this, is, is this Mike Adams down here or something? Or Tom, this, this Thomas, man?
Yeah, thanks for the line.
Might even get the lives as well. Tough getting over that.
I'm telling, I know.
And why is it, why is it going here? I mean, why is it going down?
Because, well, we had to do some evaluating. The grant's only three hundred and something thousand.
Yeah.
So what we had to do was make some, where we could circle the most people with that much money.
Were you going here with it too, right?
Yep, well.
Why ain't you going to the water plant with?
Because the city has the plans that they're gonna take it.
Oh, okay.
The city's taking it.
Okay.
And actually, see, the city's, uh, there's actually should be two of them. I need your.
What is this, Dan?
That's the water line up there.
Okay.
There we go. Uh, what's this route?
So these are the distribution lines coming off this?
Yeah. No, this Mike Adams is up here. See, the, the city's coming up with the line that's gonna go to the plant and up eight steps.
Okay.
And these are just the two lines. We think we have enough money to get that much.
Also, this is out of Terry's. This, this, this is Terry Smith.
Yeah, whatever that county road is.
Yeah, it's Terry.
It's the county road.
Okay.
From the city.
Yeah.
Called Second Street.
With the city's grants, they already got their grant and rocking and rolling.
Okay, so this gonna be a contract or city gonna do this?
Contract.
Contract.
Yes. Now, we can probably do a deal later where we have an in kind or something like that. Before you have forced labor and go that route if you want to, but that's something. After we get all the engineering and everything done.
How are you?
How you doing?
Boy, capital U, right?
There it is. You have to accept. Okay, it's recording.
Don't worry. We get really good. Holy dollar.
You're supposed to.
Anything unusual?
Well. Not unusual, no. Right in. Hell, it's a big one. Uh, we don't expect it to be, yeah, always.
What are you doing, like, back there?
Um, bless highly say. Don't complain to anybody.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, Monday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-one, center clock, and, uh, this is our regular, uh, commissioner court session. And, uh, we go open it up with, uh, Brother Ian Angelo from the Pastor Newton Baptist Church. Hope you'll prepare.
That's right. God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your sunshine. We thank you for your breath and fresh air this morning. God, we thank you for these many women who have decided to, uh, give themselves, uh, to serve this county, to serve this, uh, community, Lord. And I pray that, uh, this morning you would bestow your wisdom, uh, on each and every one of them. But God, that you would bestow your love and your compassion and your courage, uh, through and, and within each of them this morning. Father, I pray that, uh, all the discussions and all the things that are done, uh, today would be glorifying to you, Father, first and foremost. And that will be edifying, uh, to the body, uh, of, of your believers. Father, we love you and we praise you. We can't thank you enough for all you've done for us. It's in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, we have a forum here and acknowledge any guests that are here today, and I appreciate y'all being here. And first, we'll start off with our consent of agenda, uh, for approval. Y'all will look over that. Like motion to accept.
I accept.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Benson that we accept the consent of agenda, uh, as presented. There's no discussion, so all on paper. Five oh. Uh, number two is to deliberate and consider action on the following items. And number one is discuss and appropriate approve the update and renewal of interlocal agreement between Polk County and Newton County for facilitating the housing of Newton County inmates at Polk County Jail. Mr. Burby?
Morning. Good morning, Judge.
Morning.
This, uh, interlocal agreement is really just an update. We have two different sheriffs. We got new sheriff here in Newton County and new sheriff for Polk County, uh, Byron, Byron. And, uh, it's just changing the names and updating the, uh, uh, protocol. And they, we currently have one, we know only about the one person inmate there. Uh, there, we put our people that we have problems with, you know, attitude problems, people, uh, there. That's the way you get that facility for. And we are also, uh, spent some time with sheriff a couple of weeks ago. If it invents that we need to put more folks in there, we can, you know, but at this time, we, because we have the one in Jasper, uh, agreement in Jasper, the fallback to backup is Polk County.
Hey, well, I know we established that some time back.
Right.
When, uh, Sheriff Rose was here. So what you're asking us to do is to, uh, update and renew, uh, because we've got two new sheriffs, uh, one in this county and one in Decks County.
That is.
And to demify that.
Yes, sir.
Your motion? So move. Second.
Thank you. Also, I don't, I don't see it in the agenda, but we were supposed to come and talk about the torn, uh, policy and procedures we're trying to enact here. And we can't, and he's deputy landlord. Tell you about it. Just get you approved quickly.
This, uh, this will not be discussed in this, uh, this action here. Uh, I will wait till last and let you present that, uh, just for information. Because, because it's not on the agenda.
We asked about that some time back. But on this debate.
I think, uh, I instructed, uh, my sisters this morning to send out to each individual elected official to expel that in email form, so we will not be, uh, drop it through the head anymore. So, uh, if you don't mind.
Oh, I don't mind.
Okay.
Okay. You want me to wait until next time you need?
I, I, I think you should go ahead and, and, uh, tell us what you got. And then, uh, we can put it on the agenda for, we'll have a special here in a couple of weeks, and we'll have it on there.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second by Mr. White that, uh, we approve the update and renewal of inter, interlocal agreement between Polk County and Newton County for how, facilitating the housing of Newton County inmates at Polk County. If, uh, any more discussion. Not all in favor? Five oh. Number two, discuss and appropriate approve the request to hire Michael Gresson as a reserve deputy for H M Wonders, uh, Constable Precinct Four. Mr. Wonders, you here?
Hey, guys. How you doing this morning?
Fine.
Uh, Michael Gresson, are you gonna go first?
Well, uh, you just need to tell us, uh, what, what the plan is.
Uh, Michael Gresson, he's about seven year law enforcement veteran. Uh, I've worked with him on several different things. Uh, uh, I'm gonna utilize him how I need him. Uh, if I need him to come in and do extra patrols, help out with sheriff's office, help out with, you know, community events, whatever. Uh, there's three statuses. I don't know if, if y'all do know this, forgive me. I'll go ahead and explain. Three status when you hire on as a police officer, you have full time, part time, or reserve. Full time is obvious, part time is obvious. Reserve status means volunteer, voluntary, same exact training, no different. Uh, no different. They have to go through the same training, have to keep up with their training, forty hours every cycle and all that stuff. Uh, I wanna hire him as a reserve deputy. I know him. I trust him. If I need help down south for any reason, there is no backup down south. I've been in many pursuits. I've been hit by cars. I mean, there's nothing down there. So I've got Orange County, you know, I mean, we've got the sheriff's office, but I mean, it takes, you know, a long time to get down there. You get Orange County, they're, they'll be there as quick as they can be there, but they don't know the roads down there. Uh, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't hire more reserve police officers. Costs county nothing. He's gonna pay for his own surety bond. He's got his own patrol vehicle, all nine yards. It costs the county zero.
So, uh.
Your honor, may I ask you a question? This is John.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Hi, Deputy Wonders, how are you?
Hello.
Constable Wonders, how are you this morning?
Good. How are you doing?
Doing well. Who, who holds the commission for Gresson?
I would.
Okay, that, that's all I need. And, and, uh, the county would actually be holding commission for, uh, Gresson, but he'll meet all his requirements and hours and carry his own bike, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. No cost to the county.
All right, I don't have any other questions, your honor.
All right, thank you, John. Okay. Anybody else got any question?
Do you think it's feasible to take somewhere else on down there? I thought we was fully staffed in Deweyville. Sheriff?
We're, yeah, we're fully staffed. We did, uh, forgot, uh, uh, you know, on reserve program. That, you know, see that, as me, as me, uh, uh, you know, we're calling from Orange County, you know, talk to somebody before we get there. Just better to be somewhere than not though. And, uh, I don't, I don't have anything on this side, just, I feel that you can get part of that help. For, 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 for me now, I mean, I've always had a reserve. And I have paid some cost, but I haven't.
I don't wanna be stupid here, but, uh.
Absolutely.
Let, let's say, if you give him a warrant and he goes out to this house to service warrant, then, uh, this fellow's upset and he just pulls a gun, shoots him and kills him. What's our liability?
What's your, what's liability with everything? But here's my question to you. What's your liability without having extra patrol down there? What's your liability with an officer who needs backup and doesn't get it? What, I mean, you can look at liability and throw the liability out there all day long, but when it comes down to it, which one would you rather have? Now, like I said, I did the guy's background. I did an O P M background, which is a federal, I'm, I'm background certified. Uh, background's clean as a whistle. Uh, I trust him. I know him. I wouldn't have anybody working alongside me, but I wouldn't. Your, your liability is gonna be just like anywhere else, obviously. If he, if he wrongfully shoots and kills someone, yeah, that's a huge liability, but, I mean, that's.
No, what, what if he gets shot?
If he gets shot?
Yeah.
No, he's not entitled, reserved, reserved status deputies are not entitled to any benefits whatsoever. We have no benefits. The county is not responsible. Period. And there's a section in the law, I, I can't remember what code it is, or I think it's under Texas government code, uh, that clearly cites that. That the county is not responsible for X, Y, and Z. Uh, y'all, y'all have no responsibility.
Do you agree with that, John?
I'm gonna have to look at the code, your honor, but yes, and I also, uh, agree with, uh, Constable Wonders' training regiment. Uh, he's been an excellent officer in the county, and to have somebody on reserve that meets the actual requirements, uh, as far as the training and keeping up their reserve status, I think it would be an asset to the county myself.
Okay.
Yes, I guess my question to y'all would be, why not? Uh, and just for my own personal, I guess liability would be one, you know, and I understand, I just, from my benefit, I just asking that question.
Okay, as a county judge.
Yes, sir.
We're, we look at everything.
Absolutely.
Uh, and we're responsible for most everything.
Yes.
So, uh, my question was.
Yeah.
If he gets shot, what is the county's liability?
None. And I'll even, uh, I'll even look it up and get back with you. I probably can, we're gonna pull my phone here real quick, uh, and let you know. But yeah, there's no, there, they are, and as a reserve, you sign off knowing that. You're not entitled to, you're entitled to zero county benefits. They cannot legally accept, uh, compensation. Now, the county, they can accept compensation by the, like, for instance, let's say the county sheriff's coming up and y'all needed, y'all were just hurting real bad. You need an extra deputy. The county can, if you show, you so desire, compensate him for whatever you want to compensate. We're not, not saying that that's ever gonna come up. That's legal, but other than that, it's, it's a very, very, very strictly, uh, you know, stated that as a reserve officer, you are not entitled to government benefits. You're not entitled to, uh, insurance. You're not entitled to, uh, you know, retirement, anything like that, so.
I, I, I understand that.
And, and the county.
Going back to reliability.
And the county's not liable.
And, and this, and this way, just, just look down and hire this high powered lawyer, uh, uh, that's gonna find that loophole.
Yeah.
And I'm asking you, what is the county's liability? And John's gonna look it up.
Uh huh.
And, and I'm old recommend, recommend to the commissioner that we table this, uh, item number two.
Okay.
Until further investigation.
Okay.
And then we'll get back to it.
Okay.
How many calls are we sending to the constable down there, out of sheriff's office? I don't, I don't have.
We.
I do, I do.
Yeah, we, uh, um, we would ask, you know, this, this top issue, not come to. It's been a few, uh, and one of the, uh, just, just imagine, I, uh, just, we got a deputy up here that got to go around there. And they talk, talk of all of you. But there's, you know, one standard is there, you know, Maggie Jack, and one of them thing a lot, and he knows him. And that's, uh, saving very few. That's one of the, uh, reasons, uh, you know, we call, um, yeah, we got a background. And it helps us out. And he's somebody that we know that we can call.
I'm not disagreeing with.
Oh, no, yeah, I, I understand.
What, what I am, what I'm, what I'm wanting these four men to do is to have full knowledge
Absolutely.
Of what our responsibility when we vote on them.
Absolutely.
So when they say, and it, it does happen, then, well, we all knew it to start with.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Uh, I hear a motion to, uh, table.
Oh, Maggie Wood, come down here and send me.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, second. He made it. Motion been made by Mr. Benson and second by Mr. White that we table, uh, item number two. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Motion table. Uh, number three, discuss and appropriate approve the resolution authorizing the submission of, uh, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Texas Community Development plot and application to the Texas Department of Agriculture.
Goodness, judges, uh, this resolution, this is a standardized resolution that, uh, Department of Agriculture does provide us with. Uh, once again, this is going back to the application that we previously discussed with the commiss, commissioners. And I think everyone agreed that Commissioner White would submit a project in conjunction with East Newton Water Supply Corporation. Uh, this is authorizing the judge and the judge pro temp to act on behalf of the county in conjunction with this application and of subsequently funded any contracts and any paperwork at that point in time. Uh, it's also authorizing the, the application amount, the maximum amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a max commitment of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, as previously discussed. Uh, I did provide y'all a map of the project area that is currently being proposed. Uh, the project is on the county road twenty thirty-six and twenty thirty-nine. This will be installation of a new three inch water line in, in those areas and the connection of, of twenty-two current services to those areas. Any questions you have, I'll, in conjunction with that, I'll be glad to try to help and answer them. Mr. Hawthorne, with the Water Supply Corporation, I'm still here on behalf of the Water Supply as well as L J A, the engineers that were procured for the engineering component of, of this application.
So it's, oh, you're gonna end up at Mr. Shank's place with the, with the three inches? Is that where you're going, Tom? Down past Terry Smith? On the water line?
Yeah, that, the water line goes down to the Shankers, uh, where they come from.
Right.
And all of those, all of them.
They gonna, they gonna feed off of that and they getting, so they getting all new water lines and all new meetings. Okay?
Also, if I might add, uh, as y'all are aware, well aware, the, uh, the city is also trying to provide some assistance to them, to the water development board. This project is kind of in conjunction with that, in conjunction with the city. And, uh, Mr. Meeks, we have discussed it with him and he's, this is a project that he recommended as well.
Hey, Charlie. Is that little line going to the Kenny's house back here in the back?
Going where?
Is it going down here too? Off of, is it, 'cause that water line comes, comes across this field. To that road. That water line previously goes across here.
That dogleg road that we call.
Does it also get down right before you get to the church? Does it go back in there to the, Tom?
That, that one of them is always placed, uh, that's, that's one of the third batch. Uh, back then, and the pile was in the yard, uh, it came off of.
I don't think. Right, right.
It doesn't go down that way. She wasn't able to do stuff, move down, uh, she was probably too big, but it was a little problem. But we are, we're here to go down here to fix all that back. I'm looking out for the rest of that, which is just, well, this is, I have a moving line.
That's Tommy, that's something to help me. She's trying to mark a little bit, I guess. Yeah, what's up?
So you need to.
I was thinking, I'll get it for you. Bobby.
So you need to mute your, uh, mic. Sure, Paul.
Judge, if I might, if I might add.
Yes, yeah.
This resolution, the resolution itself, does not, does not file a project, uh, that's a, uh, a water project. Uh, the West Commissioner's Court is approving, if you're approving this. You're approving both you and, and the judge pro temp to act on behalf of the county. You're, you're approving applying for the maximum ground amount of water project. And you're authorizing the, the max commitment of seventeen thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
Uh, if you approve the resolution as it stands, it's no problem at all, you're right, getting with the engineers, getting with Mr. Hawthorne, doing whatever adjustments we need to the project, but you are locked into the ground amount and the, and the max amount if you approve it as it is. There again, the ground amount, uh, you all recall as we previously addressed, this is the minimum amount of max required in order to maximize points in the application. Any less than that, and you're gonna be penalized as far as your, your scoring points in the application itself.
Yeah. Okay, let me read this, uh, one more time. Uh, we're discussing appropriate approve the resolution, which is you prepared, to authorize the submission of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Texas, uh, community grant, development grant, uh, application with the Texas Department of Agriculture for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the match part is seven hundred, uh, seventeen thousand five hundred. And authorize the judge and the judge pro temp to sign for the project.
That is correct.
So that, that's what's on the agenda and that's what we're discussing. And then after, after that, then we can discuss on, if you wanna revise, uh, where the water lines go, whatever. So I hear a motion.
I make the motion to approve the resolution. Go ahead.
Here, second?
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Pombi that we approve the resolution. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Number four, uh, discuss or approve, approve the memorandum of understanding with, uh, East, East Newton Water, S, uh, W S C in conjunction with the submission of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Texas Development, uh, Community Development Block Grant application to the Texas Department of Agriculture.
There again, Judge, this is in conjunction with the resolution that was just passed. And basically, just like I said, this is a memorandum of understanding, the agreement with the Water Supply. Should this application be funded? The Water Supply themselves cannot submit an application to Texas Department of Agriculture. It has to be submitted by the county on behalf of the Water Supply, and that's where the memorandum of understanding comes in. Basically, it just spells out the fact that the county will be submitting the application on their behalf with the understanding that the Water Supply will be taking over any improvements that are done in any ongoing care maintenance of those improvements once they're, once they're completed. Uh, in the meantime, once again, if the grant is approved, the county will be addressing it as if it were their own grant. They will be the ones that will be dealing directly with the Department of Agriculture.
Concerned with that.
I do.
I make a motion to approve the memorandum of the understanding of East Newton Water System in conjunction with the, uh, the twenty twenty-one.
System in conjunction with the submission of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Texas Co-, uh, Community Development Block Grant, the application for the Texas Department of Agriculture.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. White and the second by Mr. Pombi, we approve the memorandum of understanding. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Number five, discuss, uh, status of grants currently being administered by the Taylor and Associates. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Uh, Judge, a few months back, after visiting with you and some of the commissioners, it was agreed that I'd try to give you all a brief overview monthly of the status of the grants that we're involved in. I know there's a lot going on there, a lot going on in addition to what we're helping with, so it, it definitely does get confusing sometimes. So I'm gonna run over this kind of quickly. Should you have any questions, just we go over it, feel free to ask them, but I know your time is valuable, so I'm gonna try to go over it as quickly as I can. The first box up there, that is the Harvey HMTP projects, two of the projects that are in Commissioner Pombi's precinct, the two generators. Those are currently out for bid. Bid opening on those will be May the sixth. The other three projects are still ten, uh, pending TDM. Uh, FEMA is reviewing those projects. They are looking at the benefit cost analysis on those. Uh, we have requested the status on those projects as well. Uh, we do have a call with TDM at one thirty today to try to get an additional update on this and go over any questions they may have in moving forward with these projects. But at this point in time, these projects are looking good. FEMA is just overwhelmed with, with all that's been going on and all they're trying to deal with, with the disasters, but the projects are moving along slowly, maturely. Uh, twenty twenty TDA?
You'll be getting an update this afternoon, just like?
Yes, sir, at one thirty. We have a video conference, uh, with TDM. Uh, the engineer, Pat Oats, and myself will be on that call, and this will be on it as well, so she can, can get in that schedule. Uh, everybody has a lot going on, and we realize that, but I, I did coordinate with TDM, and we set that meeting up late Friday afternoon. It's kind of a last minute deal, but. All right, on the TDA grant, uh, once again, this is the kind of, if you will, the sister grant, the one that we just discussed, submitting an application for. These grants are, are available every two years through Texas Department of Agriculture. The county did receive a twenty twenty grant, and as you will see on there, uh, there's the projects listed, uh, that we're proposing at this point in time. Once again, I did get back with TDA last week. They are telling me that they think the contract will be in your hands this week, Judge. We will see. I asked, and they were making some changes on it, that was the reason for the delay. I tried questioning the changes, and they said, well, you can look at the changes when the contract comes out. We're not sure what they are, but we don't know if the changes were done. Uh, one thing I'd like to back up just a little bit, I know that's important to, to the commissioners, on this TDA project, there is no match requirement. In twenty twenty, when we, or twenty eighteen, when we submitted that application, match was not a scoring component, and therefore the county did not commit any match to it. If you will back up just a little bit, the Harvey HMTP project, those are a twenty-five percent match project, uh, so there is a matching component on there, and as you will see, in, in precinct one, the match is forty-five thousand and some change, precinct two, twelve thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars, precinct three, uh, thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars, precinct four, hundred fifty thousand five hundred and two dollars. Uh, going on down to the GLO housing project at the bottom, we are still currently in the administration of this project. Uh, we have several questions out to GLO at this point in time in moving forward with this. Uh, one of our buyout projects, uh, we did get the closing date on that this morning. Hopefully, we'll be closing on that one this week, that will be the first one. Uh, once again, I think we discussed with y'all last week some of the issues, some of the questions and concerns we have with this. We will be meeting with GLO at two o'clock today, and hopefully we'll have some answers to some of those questions at that point in time. At this point in time, through the method of distribution that y'all approved the resolution on last week, we are proposing to move eight million dollars from the housing grant to the infrastructure grant provided infrastructure funding. Uh, on page two, that is the current infrastructure projects that have been approved in conjunction with the twenty sixteen flood. At this point in time, all of those projects have been completed. Uh, the phase two projects down there, you can see, that is the proposed project that it were, that we are proposing to take million dollars to go to in the phase two of the twenty sixteen flooding. Uh, page, page three.
Are, are we still having complications, uh, moving that money over for, uh, wording or what?
Yes, sir. We still have some questions on wording, we still have some questions on the exact budget, and, uh, those, those have been submitted up and writing, and once again, we're, I'm not guaranteeing anything, but we're hoping today we can have answers to some of those questions. Uh, in addition, kind of backing up on that, I know we spoke about the Stafford Act last week and the possible ramifications of the Stafford Act on the housing funds. We, there again, we're hoping to have an answer on that from the commission this week. Uh, last page, I said last page, the third page, last month it was the last page. Uh, the Harvey infrastructure project, uh, at this point in time, these projects have been sent up to the GLO for environmental reevaluation. They've been there a little over three weeks. I requested the status on the, the reevaluation last week, have not heard back at this point in time. Uh, as you recall, we came back and we added some additional crops culverts on this project, and that's, that's what cued in the need for the reevaluation on the environmental assessment, and we're hoping to hear back on that in short order. Uh, Harvey buyout, we are in the middle of, of processing those applications. Currently, the application process is scheduled to go through April the twenty-first. Uh, unfortunately, we have a limited number of applications at this point in time. We are gonna be going out this week, we're gonna be knocking on doors individually, we're gonna be putting out flyers in the floodplain areas, hoping that will generate some initial interest in the Harvey buyout program. It could be that we might need to come back to the commissioners and request an extension on this application.
For how many? How many applications do we have right now?
Uh, at this point in time, eight, seven? We, we have seven applications. And once again, we've got a little over eight billion dollars there.
And, and just for information for, for the commissioners, uh, unused money goes where?
Unused money goes back to the COGS for, for reallocation, now it must maintain housing identity, so it would go back to the COGS or any other areas within the COGS that can utilize the money for, for a housing buyout program.
Would it ever be offered back to Newton County in future?
Uh, the only way it would, Judge, is if it goes on up from there. Uh, the COGS does not have the opportunity to reallocate it. Uh, GLO does not have the, the option of, of reallocating that money, let's say, from housing to a non-housing activity. GLO would have to submit back to HUD to, to ask to revise their action plan to relabel these funds as, as non-housing. Uh, one of the big differences in, in this Harvey money and the twenty sixteen money, twenty sixteen money came to Newton County as, as one pot. Newton County established the method of distribution as to how that money would be, be divided up, and that's why you have the opportunity to go back, to go back and revise and distributions.
So what time and point do, would we recommend to GLO that this be, uh, redistributed through a different method? Just tell them from the point of view of Newton County. Uh, would it be at the end, or would we start that process now, or?
It, it's never too early to start the process, Judge. Uh, I would recommend that, that as far as really pushing it, maybe get farther into it, and the fact that they see housing funds are not being expended in other areas as well, that they have a surplus. At that point in time, once again, this money has been allocated by the federal government. State of Texas, GLO, HUD doesn't want to give this money back, they won't expend, but once again, this fund was had at the federal level when it came to the state, as far as this, the percentage of the money that had to go to housing and the percentage that could go to non-housing.
Okay. All right, I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
No, no, not at all, that's what I'm here for, sir. In conjunction with any of these projects. Uh, ticked off project, once again, this project went to Commissioner Pombi's precinct. He informed me this morning, this project is proposed, construction audit is proposed to be completed this week.
Anything special, I didn't close it out?
No, sir, not at this point in time, I'll, I'll be following up with the application. Uh, next one is the twenty-one, twenty-two CBT application, I think we've already discussed that in detail, so we won't get into that. The Harvey twenty sixteen mid-application, the application that was submitted on behalf of the county for the drainage area, which involved, I think it was, uh, six, seven bridges and two box culverts. Uh, that, that application, at this point in time, to the best of our knowledge, that application has been approved. GLO has not given us a date of a contract execution on that at this point in time, but they have, they have, well, both in writing generally, as, as well and verbally, said that this project will be funded through GLO. Another project I want to make you all aware of, uh, it is not through Newton County, it's through DEPCOG, but it was a twenty sixteen application for broadband service within Newton County, uh, just under ten million dollars, and we've also been notified that that application is proposed to be funded, uh, that will be provided through DEPCOG itself.
Okay, uh, I'm a little bit confused about, uh, the match money on that DEPCOG application. Uh, I know DEPCOG made, made that application, uh, they'd be getting a grant, so who, who furnishes the match on that?
COGS committed to the match on that application.
So, so, so Newton County is not obligated for that match?
No, sir, not, not legally at this point in time. Now, if they come to you and discuss it with you, that's, that's up to y'all, but as far as, as the application, as far as the documentation, uh, it, it'd be just like the resolution that y'all just signed. Y'all committed seventeen thousand five hundred dollar match for that water supply project. Uh, that's not gonna roll back to the Water Supply, that's, that's something that Newton County agreed to pick up. With the twenty sixteen mid-application for broadband, DEPCOG passed the resolution committing to the match, that match commitment.
They wouldn't turn it down, and, and we give them.
Probably not. If they, they, you give me a shout, uh, I'll be more than.
Anybody got any question?
Thank y'all very much. Again, uh, if you have any questions, at this point in time, after the day's meeting, at any point in time, feel free to give me a shout, and I'll do the best I can, uh, give you any information.
I appreciate you presenting this to us and with your most updated market, and I, I think it's, uh, well-informed, uh, information that you give once a month to commissioners, so, uh, they can be abreast, 'cause they, they busy out there on the roads and, uh, items like that, so, uh, keep them abreast on, on.
Thank you very much, Judge. If, if any of y'all see anything, any additional information you would like captured on this, on this note report, let me know, and I will see what can be taken care of that, and what.
Okay.
Thank y'all very much.
All right. Uh, number, uh, six, the discussion appropriate approve putting the property CAD, uh, Newton CAD four, five, seven, four, four, building Newton CAD, uh, two, five, five, three, two, up for bid, if approved, make a motion to advertise for the bid and, and, uh, firm of the, the minimum bid amount. This is, uh, a piece of property down in the Dewaville area, which, uh, we got through a sheriff's sale. It, uh, was an old grocery store at one time, Mr. Dean, am I correct?
Is that right?
Uh, and it's been brought to my attention, there's some interest in wanting to buy that, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, county prop, uh, policy that we do up for bid, so I put in y'all, uh, sheet there, the acreage on it and the square footage on the building, so, uh, I just need to know what y'all's take there on.
Did it have a lot of water damage?
Yeah, it had a little water damage. It, it's also had vandalism damage.
Oh, okay.
Lot of the, lectern, lot of, all the air conditioning and refrigeration system has been vandalized.
Uh, we're gonna set a price? We're gonna?
We, it actually went to the tax sale for seventeen thousand, wasn't it? Anybody remember that?
I don't remember going through a tax sale, I remember there, there was a party of interest down in the Dewaville area, submitted a, amount that he would buy it for, and the court rejected it.
So we're gonna set an amount to start, or?
We, I, I'm asking for a minimum amount to start. The, if it don't meet the, the minimum amount, it'll be automatically refused.
Well, right now, everything's sixty-five thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars as far as your tax evaluation.
We've had, had an offer of seventeen. I say we've had an offer of seventeen at one time, we oughta, oughta place it at least eighteen, don't you think?
Nah, thirty-five.
Huh?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five thousand.
Oh, thirty-five thousand.
This, this is not only in a flood zone, uh, the flood zone starts, uh, a little bit further down the road, but, uh, this, this is not in a flood zone.
And it's commercial property, right?
Yes.
No, I wouldn't give it away.
Your recommendations are?
I can hear mine, or just thirty-five?
Thirty-five minimum?
Thousand, yeah.
Minimum?
Yes.
Uh, you make that a motion?
Well, I mean, that's, uh, three more setting up there.
What do you think?
Well, I think the building, I, I, I really believe we need to sell it, but I think we already dropped that minimum down some, get, see what people's interested in paying.
Well, Marge has got.
It's gonna be hard to get thirty-five thousand, that was building, I believe, you say.
It didn't have concrete, concrete wall, don't it have concrete wall?
No, it has metal, tin metal.
Metal, no.
It's a metal building on a concrete slab, and the concrete slab's been adjusted about four times in different elevation, uh, it's not, it's not a constant foundation.
It's on Highway twelve.
Yeah, it's on Highway twelve.
Yeah.
If we can get, if y'all think we can get thirty-five thousand, it'd tick them into that.
Those cars next to it.
Huh?
All those, old cars and stuff in that right next to it?
No.
Right there.
There is, the only thing next to it is some shelving and stuff that came out of the store, it's on, on a slab next to it, and that's metal shell.
You go half the value, it'd be twenty-seven five. So I'd say go thirty.
Do what?
You split the value, it's twenty-seven five, of what they raised land in the building for last year.
Whatever y'all think. Good man, I'm not, I'm not gonna be at heart.
Nothing.
Someone is interested in it.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's, uh, someone talked to me about it here a couple of weeks ago about.
But Marge has got to pay you the fifty-five thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars.
Right.
That was twenty, twenty twenty.
Thirty, thirty-five, minimum, had to be at least that. I won't give it away. We'll give it away, maybe.
There's been a renovation to make it a fine building there.
Sound good to me?
Then we'll get back on tap for it.
So what, we're on 30, 35?
It is.
Take your most of motion. I make it most 35, it's what everybody else wants.
One second.
Good enough.
That is 20,000 under.
Motion been made, and second, motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second, Mr. Thompson, that we advertise a bid, for bid on properties CAD 545744 and CAD number 25532, with a minimum bid of 35,000. Any more discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Number seven, discussion appropriate authorized to advertise a bid to request for proposal of grant application administration service for HMGP DR 4586 severe weather storm, winter storm, Liz.
All right, this is a hazard mitigation grant program that, you know, they come off of disaster that we're declared for, and since we were declared under the, we can, there's going to be some funding available, and the first step is to authorize the advertiser for grant administrator, and then we'll start, you know, before then, we can kind of start talking about projects, so I got to look into it a little more, and I'll have the flyer where for is it, but this is just to get it rolling.
Well, I, I motion that we authorize to advertise the request for proposal of grant application and administration services for the HMGP DR 4586 severe weather storm.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Benson, that we authorize to advertise the request for proposal for grant application and administration service for HMGP DR 4586 severe winter storm. Any more discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Number eight, discussion appropriate authorized advertising for request proposal, proposal for proposals for granted administration service, administration services for HMGP DR 4572 Hurricane Laurel.
And it's the same thing, it's just that it comes under Hurricane Laurel, and I forgot to mention the other one, for both of these, the applications opened May the 10th, and they're due on September 7th of 21.
I make that move. Second. Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Pombi, that we authorize to advertise for request for proposal for granted applications and administration services for HMGP DR 4572 Hurricane Laurel. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh.
May I need the court?
Just a second. Number nine, discussion appropriate authorized to advertise for request for bid for delivery fuel annual supply contract.
And I just need the court's approval to go out to advertise for bids for the delivery of fuel annual supply contracts, from my understanding, it wasn't done in 2020 due to COVID, so we need to do it soon, for 2021.
I make that move.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second by Mr. Thompson, that we authorize to advertise for request for bids for delivery of fuel annual supply contract. Any discussion?
My fuel, they supply my tanks, Suncoats, they supply my tanks, I buy fuel from them. So that have any effect on that?
When we got the bid, then we'll. We do the annual bid for it, we put it, we have to put in there who's got supplied tanks and that kind of thing, and who, you know, who's got our own tanks. You don't just pick one, you can pick like two or three, and this just is for, this one and next one is for grant purposes, basically. I mean, you're supposed to, because you're spending more than $50,000 altogether in fuel, we're supposed to do that, and like she said, COVID stopped it. But we do let them know who we've got in the RFP or the request of bid, who's got leased tanks, so you don't have to change all of them.
Okay.
So we do let them know that when they go up for bid.
Thank you.
So when they send in a bid, then they'll say if it's $2, then can they go over $2?
I think, the way I understand it, they tell you it's just a percentage over or under whatever the base price is, you know, or they're.
Oh, okay, they start out with base price plus a percentage?
Yes, yes, because it's what's weighed so much during the year.
So it's never set them out?
No.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Are you a motion on that?
You've been made.
Don't even make.
Second, did you make that motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson, second.
Yeah, 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 I got you. Motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second, Mr. Thompson, that we advertise request for bid on the fuel annual supply contract. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Number 10, and it's likewise, but it's road material.
Yeah, basically the same thing, it's just some road material, and I just need to get your approval to go out for, to advertise.
Make that motion.
Motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second by Mr. White, that we authorize for annual request for bid for road material. Any more discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Number 11, discussing appropriate approved and accept donations for all overtime and all mileage for county aid by Shannon Ponche.
Okay, when Shannon sent in his invoice on 4/5, dated 4/5, he actually, his total invoice was 14,581.95. He is donating all overtime for county aid, which is 6,318.75, and he also dated all his mileage for county aid, which is 263.20, and I need the courts to approval to accept this donation.
Officer Jenner saying?
Sir?
Officer Jenner saying?
Yes, sir.
Well, he recognized the fact, and I had a discussion with him, that not to buy anything that wasn't necessary to operate the county, and he saw fit that he could do without this for this month, and so I appreciate it.
Appreciate that, too. Appreciate that very much.
Yeah.
I make the motion that we accept the donation. I second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Benson, that we approve and accept the donation for overtime and all mileage for county aid on Shannon Ponche. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Okay, I'll lump 12, 13, and 14 all together, and I'll read the first one, it's discussion for appropriate extended COVID-19 disaster declaration until May the 10th, 2021, and Hurricane Laurel disaster decorations on the May the 10th, and winter weather disaster decoration on the May the 10th, just extend them to the next general court regularly. Make that motion.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Pombi, we extend all these decorations to May the 10th, 2021. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Number 15 is to authorize to pay the bill.
District attorney state fund, 2,101.40. Road and bridge general, 54,621.48. Road and bridge precinct one, 89,772.94. Road and bridge precinct two, 30,346.58. Road and bridge precinct three, 37,494. Precinct four, I mean, road and bridge precinct four, 21,284.19. Courthouse security, 139.32. VAW grant, 5,178.92. Commissioner's special precinct one, 7,413.9. Commissioner's special precinct two, 38,61.62. Commissioner's special precinct three, 49,845.52. Commissioner's special precinct four, 15,344.72. Record preservation, 2,132.60. The sheriff contraband, 345.94. Call it waste disposal, 13,361.89. Motor registration, 3,995.31. The Newton County library, 13,676.87. Historical operating, 3,979.92. Record management, 1,281.40. FEMA grant, 109,920.10. Grant, 679,955.01. And technology fund, 305.12. For a total of all funds, 1,857,694.18.
I make the motion, pay the bills.
Second. Motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second by Mr. White, to pay all bills, any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Um, Mr. Burby, do you want to?
The toll program we're going to devise is going to be a public safety initiative, a toll car that has no insurance, with people driving with no license, and once we toll it, we have to maintain and charge them toll fees, if they don't come get it, we have to end up disposing of it, stop the vehicle. It's going to be very minor, if any outlay, financially, once we get it started, we're already talked about a yard, we have that, a little prison, and it's going to be a money-making entity, ten thousand dollars per year for the county. And we'll have people driving, not on the road, less people on the road, driving with no insurance and license, of safety.
Like I said, we make that statement to my assistant, and we'll get on the special, which will be here probably another week or so.
And we'll go in detail on cost and the procedures once we get on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Most wonders, do you?
Being prepared whenever I came in here, I'm sorry, I usually am, I got, page five of Texas Local Government Code, I highlighted it for each one of you.
Thank you.
Page five, Texas Local Government Code 86.012, he has an Edward. The county and the constable, specifically representing a reserve deputy, the county and the constable do not incur any liability by any reason of the appointment of a reserve deputy constable if the reserve deputy constable incurs a personal injury while serving, it says, in that capacity, if you read the forementioned, something about capacity, official capacity within the county. So there's the information that you're asking for.
Okay, and I appreciate you going and getting this, and we'll get back on the agenda in the special, which will be next week, so.
Okay.
And thank you, sir. I hear a motion to adjourn. I second. Motion been made by Mr. White, adjourn, seven o'clock, all in favor? Five oh.